Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Olode and Morse Stadium, Ante Carl LaRocque. The acronym is AMPAC. I'm the Chief Judge of Counsel Court. Today is Class 124, Class 124. What did we learn in Class 123? Well, let's talk about that in Class 125, okay? However, today's feature is dedicated to our historical master teacher, Dr. John Henry Clark. Dr. Clark specialized in the study and research of Africa's ancient governments and the ancient universal school of Luxor. Dr. Clark spent a lifetime trying to bring confidence back to our oppressed community of brainwashed and misinformed people to realize the brilliance of our past and present contributions to humanity and how we have been deprived of the political and scientific education that the Africans taught Europeans, Arabs, and all of other Western and Eastern Asiatic societies. Dr. Clark was determined to build our collective confidence through the emergence of African education and the promotion of unity and self-governance amongst our people. Dr. Clark understood the need for statehood and the political and judicial integrity of our trust territories. He gave his life to public service in the monumental task of decolonizing our minds and decolonizing our communities. He despised the notion of followership and worship of religious organizations that did absolutely nothing to liberate our people. He knew that the Africans had been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by foreign religious belief systems. The African tribes and states were conquered by organized religious faiths and missions, which caused the Africans to create division amongst themselves. However, he tried not to make distinctions between our various tribes or states, but instead, he tried to impress upon us the ideal of the collective bargaining power that we could control amongst the indigenous people as one social and economic ecosystem. Moreover, he recognized that there are no political and mental borders between our people, but only the willingness to clearly see ourselves as the same people when we look in the mirror at our faces. We love you, and we thank you, good brother John Henry Clark, for your courage, nobility, and sacrifice. Therefore, his life's work to bring us together shall not go in vain because the United States of Morocco and the United States of Africa will share one common interest of solidarity and prosperity. For these reasons, the confident Moors of the Empire of Morocco shall forever be grateful for the tireless and unselfish devotion that you brought to the consciousness of lost people who suffer from a lack of knowledge of self. We, the Moors, shall rise in your honor and galvanize enterprise, equal protection, and harmony between our extended family of Africans and the Moors Empire once again. May the spirit of Dr. Clark's wisdom carry on through the educational platform known as the AMPAC Study Sessions. Whereas AMPAC Study Session is not only an educational platform, but also a driving force to take forward action towards the vision set forth by Dr. Clark and many others that paved the way. Let us all take a moment to reflect on a 35-minute speech of the Honorable Dr. Henry Clark and his reminder to the indigenous people that the indoctrination of organized religions and foreign idol worshipping has delayed our political and social advancement. We, the conquer and colonized people, must focus on spirituality, nationality, nationalism, and constitutionalism through our combined efforts. We, the collective original people of Mother Earth, must put an end to the colonist and obstructionist mind-control programs that keep us in the status of the minority instead of the status of the majority. The term "majority" means those that occupy the seats of the external sovereign state government. If you want to practice Islam, then seize it, control it, and govern it, or get rid of it if you're not the face of it. Whereas 75% of the people on planet Earth who practice Islam are copper-colored people. However, the copper-colored people have allowed the 25% minority to rule over the 75% majority. If the indigenous people can't rule it as the majority, then get rid of it and rule under an organized religion that reflects the image of the African in the mirror. Your gods and prophets should look like you and not your conquerors. Recalling that our ancient state governments around the world failed together, so therefore, our modern state governments in our ancient lands shall rise together as united sovereign states throughout the world and bring liberation, peace, and security to our lands wherever the sun and the moon cast light upon the crest of Mother Earth. The political wars and holy wars will cease when the indigenous people unite our efforts to adjudicate those who trespass against the will of the majority stakeholders of the customary norms of ancient and modern international law. We are stronger together than we are apart. Lastly, here are the powerful closing words of Dr. Clark and his yearning plea for us to decolonize. We are ready to pick up the challenge. We are ready to start a revolution that will change the world. We won't get ready tomorrow because tomorrow's things are left to tomorrow. We will start our revolution right now, and we will start it for ourselves. John Henry Clark. Let's now take a moment to hear the wisdom of our good brother, Ashay.
I was supposed to be here early. They gave me another assignment. They didn't pick me up to go to their assignment. I followed their instructions and waited at the hotel. I would love to be here when I can be more fully in-depth on this subject because there's a whole lot of illusions about Africa's relationship with other people in the world. There's a whole lot of illusion about our relationship to the religions in the world. And these belief systems that had its origin in Africa, all of them, and there is no exception, turned on African people. I said, "There is no exception." And there's one thing you have to get through your mind and keep it. Nothing that ever came from the European mind was meant to do anything but facilitate European domination of the world. And I said, "There's no exception." Everything that was brought into this continent, everything, every idea, every so-called religion, was meant to dominate and to control. The Arabs had no illusions about it. The Europeans had no illusions about it. You were the ones with the illusions. And yet, every element that went into the making of every major religion in the world started in Africa. Why is it that you are so naive? You let people redress something that you invented, sell it back to you, and enslave you through it? I'm saying that all organized present religions are male chauvinist murder causes. And I say, "There is no exception." Why I wanted to be here early. I wanted to deal with our relationship with the people of the world and the fact that we created peaceful nations that had no word for tail because no one had ever gone to one, no word for old people's homes because no one ever thrown away grandma and grandpa, no word for orphanages. We did all of this, and over half of human civilization was over before we knew that a European was in the world, before he wore a shoe or lived in a house that had a window. Now, Africa has always and still is the prize for the whole world. We, as a people, have always been the world's richest people, culturally rich, mentally rich. We have always been the prize because we have always had and still have something that other people won't think they can't do without and don't care to pay for. Because we have always been the prize, we have been under siege for over 3,000 years. Nothing that ever brought into Africa from the outside was meant to do the Africans any good. That means all other religions. Islam was the handmaiden of Arab imperialism. Christianity was the handmaiden of European imperialism. The Hebrew faith was the handmaiden of a concept called the chosen people. Now, if God is kind and God is merciful and God has no stepchildren, he won't choose one over the other. And to say he chose some people, you're making him a bigot. And to say that he endorsed enslavement of one people over the other, you're making him an accessory to murder. The Arabs used Islam to rationalize their slavery and their imperialism. The Europeans used Christianity to rationalize their slavery and imperialism. Who are you kidding about friends in the world? Dammit, if you want a friend, look in the mirror. There's a billion African people on the face of this earth. Why are you buying third-rate junk from third-rate people thinking you can't make it? Why don't you at least make a safety pin to hold your child's diaper together? Who has programmed your mind to thinking you can't make a car? The first man that made a car, they had never seen one previously. The Japanese bought cars, bought locomotives, broke them down and studied them, and had a Japanese technician produce each piece, put it together, and had a much better train than the one they copied from. All knowledge in the world belongs to everybody in the world. Who has programmed our mind in assuming that we cannot run a nation and run it well? The main thing imperialism did, slavery and imperialism, is they removed African people from the respectful commentary of history. And they tell them, something they are still telling them, and all of the organized religions are guilty of this. I favor none of it because Africa didn't need any of it. I'm saying that African belief systems, properly understood, is 10 times better than Judaism, Christianity, and Islam. And better for the African. Now, you might have some romance with one of these religions. I have no romance with any of them. I have a romance with reality and truth, and the chips can fall where they may after I tell it. As for friends, you have had no friends. When they discovered you, they began to prey on you. Now, let's look at our relationship with Western Asia, mistakenly called the Middle East. For 3,000 years, our greatest enemies came from Western Asia. They were trying to avenge the fact that they were once African colonies. You read a book called "When Egypt Ruled the East", and you get some of the basic information on this. the first visitors to Africa came in the 1700s B.C. These were the people who would later be called Hebrews. Now, black people are ticklish on this because black people think that everything in the Bible is true. I question the intelligence of anyone who thinks everything in the Bible is true or supposed to be true. It's allegory, told, stories told to illustrate a point at a time when there were very few people reading books. And most of what went into the making of the Bible was copied from Egyptian texts. Now, if you want to get so dewy-eyed over the Bible, which is a carbon copy of a carbon copy, why don't you go back and read the original Egyptian text? Then you see where all these stories started from. You see where the story of the Exodus started from. Now, you could so dewy-eyed, you actually think there wasn't Exodus. These people walked into Africa, why couldn't they walk out? Why didn't they have to go by sea? Why didn't sea have to park? If you read Egyptian literature, you will discover that the whole story of somebody partying at sea started with about 3,000 years before the Hebrew entered. I should not use the word "Hebrew entry", but "entry" from Western Asia. Now, let's get one thing straight because black people are confused about all religions. Now, I'm not against any religion. I'm a very spiritual human being. I just don't need a preacher to preach no Ten Commandments to me when he's a backslider going with some other man's wife. I'm intelligent enough to pick from the Ten Commandments, not commandments anyway, but the missions of purity at the great school at Luxor, the Great African Training School. All right, now, let's get into this Western Asia. I'm saying that the people who came from Western Asia escaping famine did not have any Hebrew faith when they came into Africa. And there's no record of a Hebrew faith before then. Why is it that when they left Africa in the so-called Exodus, they had all three? African culture, and African religion, and an African language. Now, look at the origin of so-called people you now refer to as Jews. You're mistaken using that reference because the word "Jew" is of European origin. And the people in Europe who call themselves by their name have no relationship to the biblical people of the Hebrew faith. And I'm saying that the people we now call Jews entered world history with their visit to Africa. And when Africa was invaded, 1675 B.C., instead of joining the Africans who had been that beneficiary and saved them from starvation, they joined the enemies of Africa. No one has ever returned any favors to us. As a people, we have always been hospitable to strangers, mostly the wrong strangers. And what we have to understand now in the period of superior brainwashing is there is no European answer for African problems. Either Africans find a solution to African problems, or there is no solution. And if you don't find a solution soon, you go back into slavery. We have to stop all of this nonsense about who belongs to what religion when all of them were imposed on us in the first place. We stop all this fight between Muslims and Christians when neither one of the religions are doing them any good or moving them toward independence. All of them are handmaids of conquerors. All of them are religions of conquerors. We were naive when we accepted their interpretation of something that we had all along. I'm saying we need to take a good look at ourselves. I'm not talking about burning churches. I'm not talking about getting rid of religions. Understand me well. I am saying that every single thing that touches your life, religious, socially, and politically, must be an instrument of your liberation or you must throw it into the ashcan of history. Develop a liberation Islam. And if you develop a liberation Islam, you would have to turn on the supreme slave traders who were in the slave trade a thousand years before the Europeans, the Arabs. And most brothers who think they're Muslims are merely Arabists. Forerunners, vanguards of Arab propaganda. The Arabs are not above joining the Jews against black people. In America, they're already doing it in Detroit. In America, they're already doing it in real estate. You've got some dewy-eyed thing that you've got a friend. I still ask you to look at that mirror. And if nothing staring back at you is friendly, then you've got no friend. But this is why you start friends. All right. I'm saying something which you need to reconsider. I'm saying that everything that came into Africa, every people that came into Africa did not come to do Africa any good. Everyone, and every religion, and every people who came into Africa declared war on African cultures. They began the bastardization of African people, created a confused mulatto who didn't know whether he's to be loyal to his mother's people or his father's people. That confusion is still here. The fascination for the color of the conqueror and the fascination to go to bed with the conqueror. Now, that's raw and mean, but it's true. Now, some time ago, a North African leader, Gaddafi, was sending some Libyans to study in Europe. And he told them, "What any good nationalists will tell students going to study?" I'm not sending you to Europe to find a wife. I'm sending you to Europe to gain the technology to come back and make Libya a strong nation, a strong Islamic nation, and a strong Arab nation. And you cannot achieve any of this between the legs of a European woman. When is somebody going to get strong enough to tell Africans going to school, "You're going to come back home and pair up with a sister, but if you want to pair up over there, stay over there"? Now, the one thing we have to look at, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to conclude on this because I've left out a body of information. At the university, I teach an entire course, semester course, on Africa's relationship to other people. And I devoted several semesters to Africa before Europe, the consequences of the coming of the Greeks, who stole a lot that they think is their culture, stole a lot that you think is Greek philosophy. We've been the victims of propaganda. And yet, if you read the Journal of African Civilization, other works, we have lived in Europe, we've lived in Asia, we've lived in the Americas. The African people have already proved that they can get along with different people, amalgamate their culture with different people without one hint of a war between us. People who come into Africa immediately declare war on African culture, standards of beauty, standards of conduct, and change the African concept of "Ar" so they can rule through him. This were two of the Greeks who began the bastardization, again, the European bastardization of Africa. The Western Asians had begun it 3,000 years before that. The Romans, a bunch of well-dressed thugs who could write well but couldn't think, who borrowed practically everything. They laughed at the Africans' concept of Christianity. The African was practicing and not giving it a name. This is why you don't know nothing about the African origins of Christianity. This is why a whole lot of people will not read Ben Yarquin's "The African Origins of the Major Western Religions", "Africa, Mother, a Western Civilization, a Black Man of the Now". Because he's telling it like it is, but you also will not read white radicals who identified Africa as the origin of the great religions of the world, especially Alvin Boy Cune in his work, "Who Is This King of Glory?", in shout-out of the third century. We have lived dead with John Jackson, another radical black historian, with "Man, God, and Civilization". We let some of our great scholars die in hunger, die wanting for friendship. Now, having devoted my greater portion of my life to scholarship and teaching and digging up information on African people and trying to make African people face reality, I have often said a point that I wish you to consider. I didn't have to do it. I chose to do it. And if I had to do it over again, I would do it better. I have a lot of talent, other than the talent to teach and to research. I've never met a rich man who had a better mind than me. So if I wanted to succeed as a rich man, I could have done that. I never met a crook who wasn't a fool. I could have been a good crook if I chose to be a crook. I chose to be a teacher of African history. I chose to look in the Bible where I couldn't find my people. I started looking for them in the world, and I didn't stop until I found them. And I know why they were left out in the Bible. I know why all the angels are white. You mean to tell me God is merciful, God is kind, and not one little brown or black angel sneaked in the hell? I ain't buying that. Now, the Bible that you get so dewy-eyed over is one of the greatest pieces of propaganda ever written. If you want to read the Bible, why don't you read the Bible one day and read Mein Kampf the next day and see the comparison? That's hard on your mind because you think if you don't have Christianity, Islam, or Judaism, you don't have that spirituality. I've got more spirituality after I put all of them down. And I've got more religion after I put all of them down. All right, now, let me conclude something that has no conclusion. We have to look at the impact of Europeans on Africa. All impacts have been negative. The Romans laughed at the early African Christians. Finally, for political reasons, they stopped killing Christians and became Christians. I'm saying that Europeans became Christians for political reasons as Arabs became Muslim for political reasons and the so-called Jews became Hebrews for political reasons. People use idolization for political reasons, and what we get so dewy-eyed and think we're dealing with all the truth. If you look at indigenous African religion belief systems, if you look at the idea when Africa's had no churches or any consequence because these fools came here and said, "This is the house of God", and the African looked at that church and said, "If God who made the wind, the spring, made the ocean roll, and you're going to tell me he can fit into a little thing you call a church", that is no house of God. So somehow, we had the common sense enough to move away from it, and some had the common sense to put it down. I'm saying that you are closer to God from the further way you get away from organized religions that are all handmaidens of conquest. The Roman Empire developed during the early page of Christianity. Remember, the Roman Empire started in Africa. It rose in Africa. It fell in Africa. A lot of people need to stop reading some religious books and read some straight history without fables, without suppositions, without myth. Read straight history. Read the Mediterranean world in ancient times. She's a racist, bigger, but her chronology is good. And it's a good history of the Europeans trying to move out of Europe into the Mediterranean to find something to eat to put on that gosh darn awful European food. He has solved his problem at the expense of other people. The slave trade liberated Europe from the depressed economy they had created with the so-called Crusades and through the famoms and the plagues. Europe always solves its problems by preying on people outside of Europe. They are in a position right now that they have betrayed true socialism, which was not of European origin in the first place. And some people are confused between Karl Marx and Groucho Marx. I think a lot of people are Groucho Marxism instead of Karl Marxism. They're funny people. And if you think that that system started in Europe, no system as humane as socialism could have started among a bunch of icebox people who prey on their brothers for their breakfast. Read Palmer and Colson's World, The History of the Modern World, especially the early chapters. Now, the evidence of Africans in the New World, the evidence of 1,000 years of civilization before slavery, all of this, I'm not discussing because there is no time. But when the Romans disgraced themselves in the mismanagement of Christianity, they created a vacuum. Islam moved into that vacuum. The Africans thought that Islam would get the Romans off of their back. They were right. Islam got the Romans off of their back, and the Arabs jumped on their back, and they're still there, using Islam to justify it. Now, the African military men, because we are the greatest fighting machine in the face of the earth. If we ever discovered this, people are going to start running. Under proper leadership, proper inspiration, properly equipped, the black man is the greatest human fighting machine God ever created, if indeed God created. I think the gods of Africa created it. Once you lose track of your heritage, you lose track of your liberty in this world. The Europeans doing the slave trade, not only read the African out of history. They colonized history, they colonized information about history. They colonized image. They colonized the image of God. Who told you Christ was white? He was born in that part of the world predominantly occupied by non-European people. So you should not get into the argument about whether he's white. All you have to say, "Was he a Greek?" "No." "Was he a Roman?" "No." But these were the only people partially white in the area at the time. If he wasn't a Greek, he wasn't a Roman, he was one of those other people. You don't have to argue about the shades of color. So far as you're concerned, once you establish he was not a woman, he was not a Greek, your conversation is over. Now, if somebody else want to argue about his shade, well, that's their problem. And if you've got a problem with color, then you've got a problem with your mother and your father. You have insulted your mother and your father if you don't like what they gave you. I wear mine like a badge of honor. I dig it. I wear it well.
All right.
I'm saying, in closing, and I am closing, that what you have to do is take a holistic look. Not only at your position in the world, but your potential in the world. You have to learn how to convert everything into an instrument of liberation or leave it alone. You have to realize there were no Greek fraternities and sororities until they were introduced to secret African societies. People get all dewy-eyed over something that was imposed on them in order to control them without understanding that. That's another imperial effort. So it bothers me, and although I have good personal friends who are Muslim, that not a single Muslim scholar have dealt with that 1,000 years of African independence before slavery and how the Arabs from the north systematically destroyed these nations. They actually, it did not occur. 1591, from Morocco, an army was launched against these great independent stations, independent nations in inner West Africa. These were great states. And because of poor communication between African and Africa, there was enough armies in these states to march down to the coast and to drive every slave trader into the sea. But the communication between African and Africa was so poor. Even today, the East Africa is not too clear about what's happening in West Africa. And nobody knows what's happening in North Africa because the conspiracy to hold on to Africa is happening in South Africa and in North Africa. So the whites in South Africa willing to play a part, and the pseudo-whites in North Africa willing to play a part. In all this world, you have no friends. But if a million, a billion of you on the face of this earth scattered all over the world, what do you need with a friend other than yourself? Why can't you turn inward on yourself and say, "I will wear no clothes I don't produce"? Start with your underwear. "I wear no shoes that are not made by a brother." You're creating a shoe factory, employment at once. Start buying airplanes, break them down, and study them, and later on, make airplanes. What this whole thing is about is the restoration of confidence. It has been the role of these handmaidens of colonialism to destroy your confidence in yourself. You don't believe that you can look like a god. You don't believe a black father in your home. It's to some extent a god. That doesn't make the black woman less than a goddess. Because we produced the first human society that recognized and respected the female god. We produced the first human society that said, "You can't be a king unless you got a queen." You can't be a god unless you got a goddess. So you can see, all of these social ills that people are defending now, none of it started in African countries. I defy anyone alive, and those who want to come alive and come back and prove me, I invite them to, to show me one single case of sexual deviance, a maladjustment anyplace on the African continent for the coming of foreigners. I defy you to show me one case of teenage pregnancy, one case of ill treatment of women. We got confused with someone else's ideas, someone else's concept and definition of us. What we have to understand is that faith has not spared us for an idle reason. A whole lot of people who've been hit less than us are extinct. What is there in us that made us strong enough to take this heavy blow? 500 years of slavery, one way or the other, slavery, neo-colonialism? What made us strong enough to survive? What has faith saved us to do? And inasmuch as we gave the world its first humanity, faith has saved us to give the world its last humanity. What we have to do is to believe it, to believe that we are worthy of it, and to believe that we are capable of it. What black studies should be about, what black religion should be about, is the restoration of the confidence. And the restoration of the confidence that we must rule the state again. That is not an imitation nation, that not a, an independent nation in Africa. All the Caribbean are, they're all imitation European states. And what we have to understand is that the nation-state is stagnant. The African did not live in a nation-state, they lived in a territorial state. The African learned something very basic. Cultures have to be fertilized by cultures. People have to be fertilized by the interaction between cultures and cultures. This insecure European tightened his borders, you know, "You got a passport to come here?" The word "passport" is not in any African language. The things he invented to restrict himself, he imposed on other people. Once we gain confidence in ourselves, and once we look at that person staring back at us from that mirror and like what we see, and don't move from that mirror until you like what you see, then, in coordination with other African people throughout the world, we will give the world a new lease on life. We will turn to all of our people and not one part of them because we came from a matrilineal society that respected women to the point that lineage came down through the female side. We must answer the call of the great African-American poet Margaret Walker, who said, "Let the dirges end; let a new peace begin." Let us write a new covenant for the freedom of ourselves in the world. African men throughout the world need to step forward and answer Sister Margaret and say, "Sister Margaret, we have heard your call. And because we have never been a society that excluded women, with our women at our side, we are ready to pick up the challenge. We are ready to start a revolution that will change the world. We won't get ready tomorrow because tomorrow's things are left to tomorrow. We will start our revolution right now, and we will start it with ourselves." Thank you.